Mr. Dr.?
Here.
Mrs. Santa?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Pedrosino?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Upman?
Here.
Dr. Rodrick?
Here.
Ms. Semella?
Here.
Mr. Sun?
Here.
The United States of America and to the Republic of Michigan, our nation under God, in this long, ever-dead, endless war.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced access to attend meetings of public bodies that would change business affecting their interests discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montfort Township Board of Education provides public notes of this meeting, which include the time, date, and location, that was posted at the Montfort Township Municipal Building, all Montfort Public Schools, the Montfort Public Library, the Montfort Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper on January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Anything going on at the high school that you'd like to tell us about?
Yeah, so we're gonna start off with some things that have been happening in like the recent past. So on October eighteenth, we had a couple of ninth graders and all of the tenth and eleventh graders taking the PSAT. And for the first time this year, the tests were pretty difficult, and the scores for that will be released this Thursday. We also wanted to say that the homecoming we had on October nineteenth was a huge success, and we had a concert of the dance that attracted more than four hundred students. And we had a lot of fun playing and dancing, playing poker and blackjack, and hanging out with friends. The college fair was on October twenty-third, and we had over sixty college attendings there, and it was available during the school day for the juniors and seniors that signed up. We also recently had the cultural diversity club international dessert contest, which was on October twenty-sixth. And we had many participants bake their favorite home-made desserts and prizes were awarded to the following people: Melo Kaitas, Natalia Dudek, and Hayley Dragone and Neda Mayadet. On November eighth, the math club participated in the AMC test. This is the first in the series of competitions that eventually leads to the International Mathematical Olympiad. And we had the winners this year were Iain Rudin, who scored the highest on the AMC twelve A, and Richard Mike June for scoring the highest on the AMC ten A. We also had the MTHS school counseling night for all ninth and tenth graders, and this took place on November seventh and was held in the high school media center. The class of two thousand and twenty-six is also currently doing a school spirit sale, which features model-themed clothing and accessories, including water bottles and bookcases. And this sale started November sixth and will be ending tomorrow, November thirteenth. On Wednesday, last Wednesday, November eighth, Dr. Kilnawski hosted the annual available art project. And students in his AP Lit and composition classes submitted art pieces related to their study of the poem and the faculty at the school, served by the judges. And this is a great chance for students to enjoy some snacks and demonstrate their creativity. Also, on Wednesday was the half-day teachers convention, and then we had a long weekend. And then on November thirteenth yesterday, the underclassmen students had the option to retake their school portraits.
On November thirteen-thirteenth was the end of the first market period. Also, on November thirteenth, underclassmen students have the option to retake their school portraits. All varsity sports officially came to an end as the Thursday, November ninth, when the volleyball team took on Denver, and the third to seventy-seven miles, but unfortunately lost. Volleyball ended their season thirteen-to thirteen and won the state championship title for the second year ago. Boys soccer ended their season seven-to-seven one, tied in the first round of states, but unfortunately lost and not moving on. Girls soccer ended their season three-and-fifteen, losing the first round of states by a ball. Football ended the season seven-and-four, making it to the semifinal round of states against the state valley. Girls tennis ended the season nine-and-nine, making it to the semifinal round of states. Field hockey ended their season eight-eleven-and-one, losing the West Six in the first round of states. Now, what's going on tonight is Perry Marks' start of market period two, and this week's has started key clubs annual dates on the food drive. The food drive will run from November thirteenth to November seventeenth, and donated items we used to prepare fifty-three bags in the bonus club, and will deliver to local families. Any additional items will go directly to the Montfort Public School. And towards the future, on November sixteenth, after the annual, we'll be hosting an annual event. Coffee skiing confinement early in the year to march against a non-profit organization positioned to increase health activity and reduce burnout and mental health. So far, twenty-two of these have ended up. The National Honor Society will have a fall anniversary ceremony on November fifteenth. The MTHS party starts on November sixteenth, the third of the eighth. Despite this year's tough, a fun building and a period of a popular version of the school. The next opportunity to have a cattle pen and share the he's being will be on November twenty, the second of the year, and the fourth of the year, and this will be closed on twenty-third, twenty-second, twenty-second.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Semella. Thank you for coming in and sub-student. I appreciate that. And I might come available, huh? I read that when I was in high school, too, and they keep me having a run out a lot longer than they maybe should. Superintendent's report.
Yes, just a lot of good news. Thank you for sharing all that. A flyer, some of you probably have received it already, but we sent a four-page flyer in the mail about the referendum. It has all the information that we've been talking about this past year, so please give it the time, look at that. And if you have some more questions, please jump on the website, and there's plenty more answers for you to get more information along with videos, presentations, and other information that we're going to provide. If you did have a question, you could also submit it to the referendum dot net email address, and then we'll get back to you shortly after that. The vote-by-mail ballots also, I think, came out this weekend, so those who want to mail in their votes, you can. I heard a couple of people have already voted the past couple of days, so that's great to hear. November twenty-ninth is our virtual referendum presentation. That will be from seven to nine. The whole community is welcome to listen to that. So we'll be able to get as much more, much more information out, and if you had questions, you're going to be able to type them in, and we'll be able to answer them all and that everything as well. Two weeks ago, we visited the senior house to talk about the referendum to them. They had some really good questions, and we're able to inform them about the upcoming vote. And again, the vote is December twelfth from two to eight o'clock. It's a little bit different. It's not going to be voting in the morning. It's going to be two to eight o'clock PM. And as you just heard, the second quarter just began, so you know, you really want, educators always get to measure time, and you see how fast life goes by, you know, it goes quickly. Especially with a lot of kids that are, you know, checking off the calendar until the next vacation or until they graduate, but we're in the second quarter of school, and so far, things have gone extremely well with the first quarter. Thank you.
So I think we're gonna go to the Shopper's Stars now?
Yes.
Or you go to, uh, Mr. Asap? Ken, you're up. We started to change around the schedule just a little bit, so the kids could go home and let's see who's starting and sleeping.
Good evening. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to present our Shopper's Stars, the first market period of the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. This school year marks our twenty-third year of participation in this incredible program. Tonight's stars were nominated by faculty members in more five different categories, and the winners were selected by the community. In addition to the recognition of these wonderful students, Sunrise Shopper also generously donated one thousand dollars to the class of two thousand and twenty-four. Please join me in congratulating each of our stars this evening. In the field of academics, congratulations to Mythri Ah. Mythri is described by the numerous teachers who nominated her for this award as incredibly gifted, selfless, and the future of our medical industry. That certainly stands out a lot of pressure placed on a student, but Mythri has proven repeatedly that she enjoys the challenge, particularly when it involves the field most important to her. Mythri has taken advantage of basically every opportunity that she has had to further her knowledge and experience in science and medicine, despite only being a senior in high school. For example, Mythri volunteers at Children's Medical Center, Valley Hospital, American Cancer Society, and the Montfort First Aid Squad. In an effort to support the latter, Mythri has even attended EMT school, which can occupy up to fifteen hours per week of her time. Last year, Mythri was selected by Rutgers as the Locksmun Student Scholar, where she has had the experience of conducting research in molecular biology and presenting the findings. Resonance is Mythri's true passion. She was selected as the TA of the class last year and took great pride in helping classmates conduct research or better understand concepts even late into the evening. During the past two years, Mythri has been a part of the Columbia University's Science Honors Program, which organizes enrichment classes every summer. Her accomplishments include being a USA Biology Olympiad semifinalist and bronze medalist, AP Scholar with Distinction, National American Commended Scholar, last year's winner of the MTHS Research in Molecular Biology Symposium, current president of the French Honor Society in HOSA, which is a club at MTHS specifically created for those who wish to pursue a career in the medical field, and is also the recipient of the New Jersey Seal of Honor of Mercy in French. Mythri has been able to accomplish all of this while also maintaining a four-point-six-plus GPA, a truly exceptional achievement. Mythri decided on which college to attend and plans to pursue a major in medicine. Again, congratulations. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Michael McRaglin. Michael was a key reason for the football team's success this year, ending the season with winning record and even stunning victory over varsity hoes in playoffs. Although the season ended with tough balls, Michael's leadership and determination inspired the team to keep battling even when defeat seemed certain. Michael's football career began in second grade with the Broncos. By eighth grade, Michael was selected to participate in an All-Star Game exhibition match, which aims to highlight our top players. Because of the talent that he showcased for years on the Broncos and also during the All-Star game, Michael was recruited to play football at High-Echo Catholic High School, but his heart belonged to Montfort. Michael was excited to join his brother Brian on the varsity football team during his sophomore year, and by junior year, Michael was establishing himself to one of the stars of our team. During this time, Michael was also selected to join the Silk City Elite Football Club, which is a private team that travels the country to play exhibition games. Also, as you can, Michael joined the track team in an effort to continue developing his endurance, speed, stamina in the offseason. Michael has also participated in soccer, wrestling, and basketball in various recreation and travel teams. His true passion continued and continues to be football, and during this year as senior captain, Michael had a kick-return average of over twenty yards. Giants desperately need thirty offensive touches for over two hundred yards, and was named as the first-team All-Liberty Division returner. Michael was still applying to colleges, but we look forward to seeing his continuous football career in the fall. Again, congratulations. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Zachary Siegel. It is truly rare for a student to give up their lunch to complete work for a class that they've not actively taken, but that's the best way to describe something Zach is doing currently. During each the past four years, Zach has taken a variety of art classes and has excelled in each. Last year in particular, Zach created some incredible ceramic artwork, which was entered into the New Jersey State Fair this past August. At this event, which was attended by almost half a million people, Zach received a first-place award in the ceramics and applied arts division, and a special award for outstanding achievements in the home and hobby division. Zach's artwork also won him an award for Best Home Economics Handicrafts, which was paired with a substantial scholarship at the Peters Valley School of Crafts. Although Zach is not currently taking ceramics three until the second semester, he uses his time right now during lunch to continue working on some exceptional art pieces. Throughout high school, Zach has also nurtured a passion for helping people, particularly through the medical industry. For example, Zach is currently a cadet EMT on the Montfort First Aid Squad, achieving CPR and AED certification through the American Heart Association. Additionally, Zach was one of only a few high school students around the country selected to attend Georgetown Hoyas Summer Emergency Medical Program this past summer. Zach has also participated in our baseball and football teams during his freshman sophomore years, and proudly maintained a four-point-two-plus GPA during his junior year. Zach is still applying to colleges and plans to pursue a degree and career in the medical field. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to Sophia Calaveras. The origin of Sophia's extensive experience serving the community is deeply personal and exceptionally admirable. Since kindergarten, Sophia has been a girl scout, even recently received a gold award, which requires at least eighty hours of service. Sophia's primary work led to a partnership between MTHS and Be the Match, which is a nonprofit organization that maintains the registry of marrow and blood stem cell donors, and facilitates the connection between the organization. A tremendous amount of work was required to be approval for the Be the Match event at MTHS, and Sophia was instrumental in marketing that program. In order for Be the Match to be successful, Sophia created a presentation, then spoke with every single senior last year to raise awareness of the organization and the benefits of being a marrow or blood stem cell donor. Sophia's work led to changes in our health curriculum to incorporate information about the Be the Match registry and its potential to save lives. More importantly, sixty-two people, including senior students and faculty, volunteered to be donors at last year's event. Sophia's tenacity, perseverance, and dedication to such an amazing organization means that more lives can be saved. Lives like her mom, who was diagnosed with leukemia and needed a stem cell transplant, will be saved. The transplant occurred this past June, and Sophia was the donor. Mom is now in remission, and I'd like to pause here to offer a round of applause for that incredibly positive performance. In addition to second mind, Sophia is the vice president for the Uplift for Life, active participant of Reach, Make-A-Wish, Misses Miracle, and the Varsity Boys Soccer Team, team manager of varsity softball, and inductee into the National Honor Society. Sophia is still applying to several colleges and plans to major in accounting. Again, congratulations. In the field of leadership, congratulations to Armon Agarwal. Although I'm going to share individual accomplishments in one, it's important to point out that Armon's leadership of several local and state organizations impacts the lives of literally thousands. This impressive feat, while still by high school students, is one of the main reasons, one of many reasons why Armon is truly special. In his junior year, Armon was one of only thirty-two students selected to serve as a peer leader of our PAL club, PAL, a club that he is now co-president of and responsible for tasks such as running the student orientation, promoting mental health, and mentoring incoming freshmen. Last year, Armon was the only junior on a tier of six seniors selected to conduct economics research, which was eventually submitted to the Federal Reserve for publication. And that work earned an honorable mention in a journal for future columnists. Like PAL, Armon is now co-president of our Federal Reserve Club, ultimately responsible for selecting the team members and leading the research. Armon is probably most well-known for his work at FBI, where he served simultaneously as the vice president at MTHS and also at the northern region of the New Jersey FBI. In this capacity, Armon is responsible for organizing conferences, workshops, and other events for sixty-five members throughout the state. In addition to his leadership in various organizations, he is a National American Commended Scholar, recipient of the President's Volunteer Service Award through SEWA, a Hindu faith-based organization, captain of the Varsity Boys Soccer Team, inducting into the French Honor Society and National Honor Society, and perhaps most impressively, is the state champion of Hindu doubles to be. Armon is still applying to colleges, but plans to major in business. Again, congratulations on Armon and to all of our first-class members.
Yes, and students, if you want to leave and don't want to hang out for the remainder of the meeting, feel free to leave now, but if you'd like to stay and see how the Board of Education works, you are cordially invited. Hope you understand. Congratulations, everyone. Okay, next presentation. That's short. We have your presentation on the Amber Report, and student performance and accomplishments.
Yes, thank you, Dave. Good evening. Hopefully, we'll keep some of the positive momentum going from the Shopper's Stars into our short presentation on the student performance and accomplishments for two thousand and twenty, twenty-three. Part of this presentation specifically related to some of the testing scores. That's a requirement by the New Jersey Department of Education for every school district to share the results of the student's performance within sixty days of its release. We're hovering around that sixty a day tonight, so it worked out perfectly. So I'll begin by speaking about. First, the scores relate to the NJSLA, which is New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. Just a reminder about the levels that we're talking about here ranges from five levels to level one, not meeting grade level expectations, all the way to level five, which is exceeding grade level expectations. So as we move through a lot of numbers, I apologize in advance, but you're gonna see a lot of numbers for each grade level and the performance of each one of these levels. But as we move through and begin, I'll show you what I think we should focus on and take a look at as we move through each one. First, as you can see, the numbers for grade levels three through nine, I would like to direct your attention to the two numbers on the right. That's a summary percentage of students that are meeting expectations or above. So that's students scoring level four or five. We like to focus on those for this presentation. And then, as you can see, the number in the dark, black hole, that's the district percent of students that are above level four. And then to the right of that, in the white, are the students in the state of New Jersey as comparison to our students who scored level four. Historically, we score well above the state average in your Montfort Township, and we continued that trend all along. Just to make a couple of notes for these, the good news is we improved in five of these six grade levels. So that's a good sign, and the improvements range anywhere from five points to one point in each one of those areas. But we always like to see pretty much general improvement in each grade level, and for the most part, we saw that. So we were pleased to see that in English Language Arts for two thousand and twenty-three, admission of the NJSLA Language Arts. Here are our mathematics scores, and as you can see, once again, we performed, you know, much better than our counterparts in the state of New Jersey as a whole. And I'm proud to announce that eight of these grade level areas, eight out of the nine, we showed improvement. So that's always good evidence that we're on track with what we're doing with our students, so hopefully that performance continues to improve. Our largest jump was grade eight, and we actually increased fifteen percentage points there. So last year in that area, we were in the low side, but we improved significantly there. So that was one of the grade levels to note for the improvement in mathematics. Science is an interesting task. This is a relatively new task. It's only a few years old. As you can see, these numbers for our grade five, eight, and eleven, students that have scored at the proficient or advanced level. That's what the bold black numbers represent, fifty-one percent in grade five, thirty-six in grade eight, and in grade eleven, forty-six. So at first glance, those numbers are a little bit alarming because they're not consistent with how we generally score. But when you compare that to, again, to the state level of proficiency, you can see we still do considerably better in that area. This is something that's created a little bit of controversy around the state and the districts. We're used to seeing science grades on prior tests, you know, before they changed the test a couple of years ago, and they're ninety percent dot range, typically ninety percent range. So this is something that we're closely monitoring. I know Andrew Woodring is working closely with some of the teachers and supervisors to see if we can address this area, particularly to science and some of the things that they're trying to measure on this test, which again is new. And hopefully, we'll work before we're making some progress on that, but that remains an area that we're going to continue to focus on. But I didn't have to say that in two or three grade levels we didn't improve from last year, so we are making some progress in that area. One of the requirements in this presentation is to break out the results by subgroups of students. So one of those subgroups that we have to share this evening is the performance for special education, and I did so in that case here for the language arts in special education. And included on that right column are district percent of students that scored grade level level four, which is meeting expectations or higher. And consistent with some of our other results that I showed you this evening, in this area, we did improve in five of the seven grade levels that are shown on the screen. So again, we feel pretty good about that consistent improvement across most grade levels in this subgroup. As we move on to mathematics, we had actual identical kind of performance here. We improved in five out of the seven grade levels. So again, there's also steady improvement in this subgroup in mathematics, and you can see the results there on the right side. These are pretty consistent to prior years, but like I said, we did improve in five of those rate levels, so that's something that we're always looking to do as we take a look at this data every year. And again, same thing with science and subgroup special education, and this is the percentage of students again who improved or scored at the proficient level three or advanced level of proficiency. One of the other requirements of sharing the test results this evening, other subgroups that we have to share and compare. In this case, we have subgroups of race with Hispanic, Asian, and white students, and that graph there compares the performance of those groups in language arts. Typically, our Asian students perform very well, and the white and Hispanic students follow closely in this test course. Moving on to mathematics, again, the results are pretty consistent across those subgroups. Again, red representing Asian students, the green representing the white students, and the blue representing the districts of Spanish students. And those are the percentages of students that met and exceeded expectations. And then last is performance of subgroups by race and the area of science. And again, those same subgroups are being compared on this chart. Some other information we'd like to share, I know last year during this presentation, we didn't have the ACT scores out. But we were, we were a little bit later with this presentation this year. These are the current ACT scores for last year's class, and you can see those comparisons in English, mathematics, reading, science, and then composite score. And you can see our comparison. score, and you can see our comparison with the state of New Jersey as well as the scores on national average. And as we consistently do, we do outperform our counterparts in the state and in the nation of the ACTs. Also, our SAT scores, these are some of the higher scores that they have seen since I've been here for our students. We have pretty significant improvement over last year, but you can see those numbers pretty much speak for themselves. Reading and writing, six hundred in mathematics, six twenty. Last year, we scored seventeen points lower in reading and writing, and we scored eight points lower in mathematics. So this year, we made this improvement, so that's always good to see in the area of SATs. In the area of national merit data from the last three years, we usually group those in three years, we have six national merit finalists, six semifinalists, fifty-nine commended students, and two who scored a national merit scholar award. And these are based on the points on the PSAT that's given in the fall for those students. We also take a look at our AP exams that were given in twenty-six subjects last year, and seventy-five percent scored three or higher, and a score of three or higher is considered passing and may be considered for college credit in many colleges, you know, across the country. We had one hundred twenty-nine students received a score of five, two hundred and thirty-seven students scored four, and of course, two hundred forty-one students received a score of three. Those are relatively consistent with how our students scored historically. I didn't want to make note of students who received some honors in the area of AP, and I'll read you a little bit about each one of these means. The first one is AP Scholar with Honors. We had twenty-seven of those students. That is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point two five on all AP exams, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. So we had twenty-seven students be recognized with that honor. The second one, AP Scholar with Distinction, we had fifty-one students, and this honor is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all APs at M State, and scores of three or higher on five or more of those exams. So we have fifty-one students there. You can see where the number of students taking, you know, a large number of AP classes. And the last one, AP Scholars, we had fifty-two of those. Those are granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. So congratulations to those students. And again, those students are just not so consistent with some of the numbers that we have achieved in the past. So that testing data is a snapshot of some of the data that we use to evaluate our programs, our curriculum, our teaching. The standardized test scores that are administered by the state of New Jersey, it's a small piece of data that we use to evaluate our programs. We have a lot of internal data that we use to help drive our instruction and drive some of the programs that we provide for students. We take all of the testing data, and we try to, you know, take steps to address and improve as we're always trying to do. And I know Mrs. Woodring's office is very actively working with the supervisors and the teaching staff on making those improvements. So this is some, these are some of the things that we do, sort of in a formulaic way, I think, as we get these test scores each year. And you can see some of the things there is really starting with assessing the data, taking a look at specific standards, how we do that on individual test questions, what test questions that our students struggle with, if there's consistencies there, how do we attack that through curriculum or through teaching? We look at students' responses to see whether they're going right, whether they're going wrong. We collect all that data along with our internal data that we provide over the course of the year. We meet as grade levels and departments, and we have discussions about it to determine what we need to do to make improvements and make changes. And some of the things that that may involve, we utilize our Title I and S three funds to provide academic support for students, inclusion programs for multilingual learners, ESL and BSI staffing can be impacted as needed. We have diagnostics that I mentioned in the district that we use regularly. Mental health has been one of our district goals for the past couple of years. That's an area that we continue to address, student mental health and staff mental health to help improve. And then we have differentiated math labs and algebra, geometry, and geometry to continue to try to differentiate student experiences in the area of mathematics. And then finally, professional development, which is a nonviolent process with our staff. We have different instructional programs and evidence-based strategies and interventions that are consistently shared and delivered to staff. We have Psyop and elevation for teachers to support multilingual learners. Those are our programs to develop teachers and their understanding and work with L students and English language learning students in classrooms. We have a new updated math program for K five, envisioned 2024, that our teachers really liked through that pilot project and was implemented. And we're currently piloting ELA program K through five called Amplify, and that's being piloted in a number of grade levels across the district schools, and we're in anticipation of when we're going to pull that out as a new program moving forward. So now we move away from testing data a little bit and talk more broadly about some student accomplishments. We take great pride, obviously, in the district, as you all know, in well-rounded students in athletics and arts and clubs. And just to highlight some student accomplishments this evening, our forensic team, which I mentioned every year, was once again ranking one of the top one percent schools in 2023. We had students that qualified in place for national speech in big tournaments in several categories, and our debate team also took first place as a top team in New Jersey. Five student projects qualified for New Jersey History Day competition at the University of Washington, and one student's website advanced to the national competition in Washington, D.C. So we're excited for those students and those accomplishments. FPLA also had a number of students, four students qualified as national finalist winners in the leadership contest. And definitely, we have students who qualified and competed in the International Career Development Conference in a variety of events, and our science community had a team also placed fifth at the NTIT regional competition and advanced to state. So congratulations to those students and those clubs for those accomplishments. So individual student accomplishments, we had students selected for performing region one orchestra, one selected for win the ensemble region one. We also had five students who were selected for region one choir, two students for all state choir, and one student was then selected for all eastern choir. So again, our music program, our art program, and our district grid clubs, we're very happy to see our students shine in those areas. Moving to athletics, team accomplishments, a very active, successful season for teams last year. Our volleyball team were NJAC champs, and Morris County champs, and sexual champs. In winter, our bowling, ice hockey, and sports basketball team had conference champions and certain sexual champs, so winter was very strong once again. And spring, our baseball team, for a second year ago, twenty-one season, were sexual finalists. And then our girls and boys golf team had outstanding seasons last year as NJAC champions. So that was our team accomplishments. Some individual athletic accomplishment, we had five starting bowlers who played first team all conference. That program continues to thrive here in Montville. A hockey player was the Morris County representative for the Dallas Player of the Month in January, and the Surett Division Player of the Year. We had a cross-country individual who earned the best softball time in Morris County last year, and we have one individual golf competitor who were in Morris County tournament champion with a score of sixty-nine, and he was good at golf. That's a good score. Girls' basketball, three athletes participated in the North-South All-Star game, so that the girls' basketball continues to shine, and some of those individual accomplishments are very impressive. Just some graduation information, ninety-one point five percent of the 2023 class attended college or university, a six point five of four years, and five percent of those students two-year college, and then eight point five students moved on to other activities in one of those four areas that we listed there. One thing that changed, I think, our two-year college percentage dropped from ten percent to five percent. So that was something that was, I guess, a significant change for what we're seeing. It appears those students chose a different route other than the college and went to some of those other fields that are mentioned there or out here. I always like to list a sampling of the last three years of colleges for you to review of some of the acceptances that our students have received, and there took maybe three of those, you can take a look at those. But as you can see on the list, many of the top colleges across the country, our students are accepted to one regularly basis over this three-year period that we should present. And I'd if you'd like to finish with that, so that concludes my other presentation for this evening. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. So much, please. Got a couple of questions, if you online.
Sure.
What's our graduation rate? Our graduation rate? Is it ninety-nine, which is pretty darn high. Good. It's important. And another question, I noticed that you had a lot of students taking the AP exams. How many unique students take AP classes? And what's the average number of students? Do you know about any chances? I've never looked at that data. Andrea has one. I mean, I'm just wondering if a few students are taking a lot of APs or a lot of students are taking a few APs?
I can get you that specific number if you can for last year, so I haven't done it for this year.
Okay.
But it's hundreds.
Good.
Yeah. It's not the same if you had a student.
Good. Any other questions, comments?
So what was the change in this science? I mean, I just came one of the numbers to come up by the same token, when I see state-wide pass scores of, I think nineteen percent it was, that makes me wonder, maybe the problem isn't the students or some instructional, maybe the problem's the test?
Yeah, I think a lot of my colleagues across the state of New Jersey, and their positions on Andrea especially, probably shares that opinion. I've heard some descriptors that I won't repeat tonight, and some of user presentations. Andrea and I actually talk about this all the time, and she has some clear ideas about ways and sort of implementing some things with the teachers and what would be more instructional time in science, different approach towards inquiry in science. It appears this test measures science a little bit differently than the tests in the past, and I think everybody's trying to figure out exactly, you know, what they're trying to measure with this test and the ways that we can adjust some of the things we're doing in the area of science to help match some of the things that they're looking for. But it's a relatively new test. It's been a few years now where scores have been kind of similar across the state. Not a whole lot of answers to it, because like you said, it seems to be more of a testing problem than it is performance problem.
Other than that, it's just so great to see all these wonderful student achievements. You know, with the Shop Right Scholars over here, it's a long presentation because it just takes so much time to talk about all the student achievements, and that's just really like to see, just makes us very proud of our students and our reservation.
You know, when our New Jersey school board rep comes here on occasion, she comes here, she's always impressed by how our students are achieving and how well they're doing, and that's one consistent comment. Every time she comes, she's always saying that, how much our students are achieving there. Top to top. Yeah.
I can see. I just have a question. Do you know the number of students that are participating in the college credit classes that are earning college credits now? How many students do that? Because that's a big savings for kids, for their parents as well, and that they can graduate early. I was just wondering if you do.
We can get that. We can get that data. They just, they were still working out and getting in. I think they had a certain amount of time to apply at a very reduced rate to get that college degree or anything like that. But I can check the school counseling at the high school level and the final for those kids in those classes, and also walking in credit at our school.
Yeah, it's great. A lot of kids save six months of college sometimes a year, and that's wonderful. Also, I think one of the first polls that we brought, I just saw that grades three, six, and nine were still higher than the state level, but they dipped. Are those generally transitional years for kids where they're getting? Can you explain that a little bit?
So if you look at a lot of the research on student mobility, it's not just a new child moving into the district, it's also children moving from one school to another, or at the third grade level is the first time they're taking standardized assessments, but it's very common. It usually has a negative effect size on student performance, and that, that's not just here, but in a lot of places. So the mental health and the SEL is a big factor in those transition years, especially sixth grade and ninth grade. Those are huge. It impacts the students a lot and not just their academics.
Is there, we'll just hold more, sorry. Is there anything else that you would like to do that could help the students that were not doing that? I'm just curious.
You know what? Listening to the resumes of the Shop Right Stars and then seeing this data presented, I'm always so amazed but never surprised at the talent and achievement of those students. Sort of a request, I remember many years ago, I attended a board meeting where there was a short presentation by one or two members of the forensic team, and they did what they did, a little speech or a bit of a poem that they wrote. Do you think we could do that at some point before the end of the school year or coming next year? It's very inspiring to do a speaking.
Remember when we had a student rep who was also, I think he was state level, I think he was one state level in one of the forensic categories. He was, remember him?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was amazing. He gave a great, nice speech. It was one of the best ones I've ever heard. Any other questions?
I've got a number. You gave us great data. Thank you. That took a lot of time to do together. You gave us nice comparison data with the state and New Jersey and the national. I'd love to see comparison data from Morris County or maybe the surrounding towns, just to see how we're doing here, so to speak, if that's available.
Yeah. We don't have that data sent to us. You used to compare us to districts in our district factory, county, or state-wide. And historically, we perform, you know, I can't speak to most recently, but I know historically, since I've been here, when we used to use that data to compare, we were very consistent with districts in our district factory, which was I, and still is at that point, as it is currently. We, I know we performed very consistent with that when we made those comparisons in the past, but I don't have that recent data now. You don't, you don't, the state, it's been a number of years since they've sent that data to us to compare, you know, like peers and counties there.
The other thing I discovered is our algebra and bizarre, we have ninety-nine percent pass rate. Does that teacher deserve some kind of award, or is there some other anomaly that reasons that?
Yeah, we mention this each year. So yeah, so remember, students that are taking the algebra and bizarre tend to be our strongest math students. That's why you see a little bit of a drop off in ninth grade because those might be students that are, you know, it's not the strongest subject perhaps, so that's why you see that big differential there. But, you know, generally, our eighth grade students who take algebra score usually within that ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent range, but that's where you see that discrepancy. They're the most capable students in that subject area.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, let's move on real quick. Before we leave, a good news section, because it's supposed to be news. Did any of you go to see the bizarre play, Artis Bell? Yeah, a very good job they did.
Excellent.
Yeah. And I look forward to seeing them up in the high school.
Yeah, it's nice to see it at the stars, it's a stage, but doesn't get used that often. It's a small stage, it's too small for the concert, which you'd rather do at the high school, but for an intimate production like that, it's actually very nice.
It's a very good production. I encourage everyone to go see it tomorrow next year, give it a chance. And also, I encourage you to go this Thursday, Thursday, Friday for the Pops, seven-thirty at the High School. Please be there. Okay, let's move on to section G, reports in the ASONS. Still, these invite Studies in finance, Karen?
We met right before our board meeting. We spent much of the time talking about the referendum and what our plans are going forward until we gave the vote. We will be reaching out to the association to begin negotiations and and pleased to chair the committee of board and vote for the meeting of the association. We also talked a little bit about the demand that the district bought to help ease with some of the busing costs. And, okay?
Oh, you're jumping a little ahead. Got the ad hoc meetings later, but thank you for mentioning that. Everybody get started on the MTA negotiations. Scott? Curriculum, Michelle?
Meeting before the next board meeting on December.
Okay, policy, Joe. Just that we have a second meeting of our policies for a destiny on the October fourteenth. It says first reading is on. What, is that supposed to be second reading today?
Yes, second reading.
Okay, can I ask for a correction on that? Karen?
No, no, what is it?
I don't know, which is just.
Just to say. Say that it's second.
It is second. I actually know.
The, you might be reading it first. At the bottom, Dr. Motter, I get it. You could talk about first reading on fourteenth, and then at the bottom it says seven.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, question for policy, when is the next meeting?
We don't have anything scheduled yet. I think we'll get our episode up, please, or schedule the meeting.
Okay, communications, Mike Palmer.
Port.
Okay, safety, Mike Draper.
Motorport.
L.A.'s on the church of school boards, Karen?
At the end of October, it hears the school board's every day a host, a four-day convention. There is no different risk here. I had a wonderful time, lots of programming. I had a distinct honor, a meeting event, was able to address board members as well as some of our sponsors, as well as our keynote speakers, including the commissioner of education. I know two of our fellow board members were there for a couple of days, John and Jill, and I'm sure they also had a good experience. And we can go into next year's. To board cap.
I am scared too.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I know. Okay, and L.A.'s on the church, uh, sorry, Morris County School Boards, Michelle?
The next meeting is on December seventh. It's a hybrid meeting, so you can attend either via Zoom or be in person at Marginal High School from six to eight. The topic, I should say, is finding board leadership in Congress. Good topic.
Morris County Educational Services, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, I've been reading that one related to the president.
Joe, would you like to mention the drug awareness council?
Yes, this meeting on the second, which discussed the upcoming speaker program on the twenty-eighth at seven p.m. at high school.
Great. Michael, I'd like to use for Charlie.
They've cut down the number of meetings on the agenda. I haven't, I missed the last one, I'll go into that one, I think, which is in December.
Are they cutting them down or just not telling you about them?
Pardon?
So are they cutting them down or are they just not telling you? Okay. Karen, see your fellow days on?
Yeah.
Charlie? Hilldale, ladies and gentlemen.
I'll report.
Joe, Valleydale?
Next meeting is on January seventeenth.
John, Wayne Mason?
Hello, good morning.
Woodlock, Mike Palmer?
Port.
Al Gore, Christine?
Don't report.
Okay, last chance. High school, Mike Draper.
Yes, so, because we're very short though. We did meet last week. However, the student rep did a very good job and they ticked off almost every single one of my points. I'm not going to repeat like all of those. The only thing I want to add is about the midterms. There was some additional evaluations of the midterms. And it's going to change, format's going to change again a little bit. So, Mr. Semmer said that information about the new midterm will be coming out in December. I'd like everyone to know about the new format of the school day and how the classes are going to be handled and the extended periods.
Okay, just so that everyone knows, we are going to be starting our negotiation season this year, coming up very soon. For ad hoc committee negotiating with the MTA, it will be Karen as chair, myself, Mike Palmer, and Mike Draper on that committee. For the MTAA, we're going to have Charlie as chair. We have Joe Dottry, John Petrasino, and Michelle Zuckerman on that committee as well. And for the MTSEA negotiating committee, we're going to have Joe as chair. Charlie, John, and Michelle are also going to be on that committee. So that's a slight correction to where it says the agenda. Okay, public participation. If you have any kind of secret link on any item on the agenda, please feel free to come up to the microphone, give us your name, and leave a comment. Anybody have any group interest interests on the agenda?
If you're members. Before I get into my point, you guys have any important agendas that you?
I didn't see, sorry, I didn't see it.
That's why I can follow along. With regards to the referendum coming up, you know, I know it's December twelfth, it's.
It's the next time. Well, you can mention it.
No, it's not. It's not on the table?
Yes, sorry. People are asking you guys?
Okay.
We'll be there in just a moment.
No problem. With regards to NJSLA, great presentation, very thorough. I do like to suggest that everyone has something. When the parents do get copies of those NJSLA reports, sometimes for some parents, it's, it's, it seems like gibberish. Yes, your child's scoring high and it's above grade level, above state level, there's a number involved in it. But there's never any discussion between the teachers or the principals or anybody with the parents on what they mean or what they mean to your school and what they mean to the district and what they mean to the state. So if that can be addressed somehow with the school principals or possibly the teachers to go over what those actual scores mean, what those numbers mean, so that way the parents understand it. So that way, next time they do get it, they don't have these questions. Because there are a number of parents, especially my kids attend Woodmont and Al Gore and other schools. But especially at Woodmont, there's a lot of parents that ask several questions. And if it's explained once, I'm sure parents will understand it and not have it next time.
And now the state, aren't those letters generated by state, or just generated by us on the state?
No, I generate the letter, I generate that, it goes up to parents and it doesn't give any questions for the refer to school handles.
Okay, so.
Sometimes I get answered something and I just, I think it's better if it's addressed. Either parent-teacher conferences or anyone else, that way parents understand what those scores mean and what and how. Because if it's significant, it's, it's good enough, especially if your kids score high or whatever your score.
Well, in case, maybe you can take a look at that letter and see if you can do some difference on it, maybe maybe it'll clear. But you have to understand, there's a lot.
I know, there's a lot.
So you can't go.
There's a lot, you don't got to explain it. I don't know what I want to. So with regards to the referendum on the question.
Come back, listen. Okay, any other participation comments on the agenda? Seeing none, I asked for, I have to close this. And who's going to consent resolution, I, you, them, motion please, Karen?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any question on the minutes? Section J, Grant. Formation. Section K, studies in finance?
Section K, five, we just got to renumber them, five, six, seven, eight. Correct, always the way.
It's two number sexes. Several different numbers. Okay, section L, personnel? Section M, virtual? And policy? Seeing no questions, ask for a roll call.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Dr. Cortelina?
Yes.
Mr. Dottry?
Yes, same on K one, check number six, nine, four, four.
Mrs. Vanna?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Petrasino?
Yes.
Dr. McGraw?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe, by the way, for reminding me. I do need to submit a reimbursement for my attendance at the meeting. John? You were there?
Yes.
As you can see.
I might have to pay money, I don't know.
Okay, no close session. Any old business or general or common to do business in the board?
Just real quick, myself and Joe Dottry went to the VFW Veterans Day ceremony. And Principal Doug Sanford hosted it, and it was really, really wonderful. A lot of students were there, it was an answer, an ask and answer kind of presentation. We had our student, one, I forgot his name, the young man, he played taps. And then we had a singer from the high school that did a really great job. It's so great to see the kids participate with the VFW. So, that was great.
Yeah, of course I have to make that. Any other comments?
I just, Karen and I attended the Ann Magdor last night. Of course, it was a, it was that, the hall was. And yeah, it's a great time, it's a great group of kids. And I also got to see the marching band in States of Old Bridge a couple of weeks earlier, they finished seventh of the state. And there was a great group of kids there. And I always, I always say to anybody who's interested in the band, I said, my daughter, she was in fourth grade, I said, the friends who made the band are going to be the best and most lasting friends they had in high school. So I would say that to anybody who's sent me that joint.
Thank you. Okay. We have our next public participation session. You can ask any question you want.
You can make any comment.
Or, sorry, you can, you can make any comment you like. We will take your comments. Would anyone like to come up and say anything else to the board, email the referendum?
Three, four, five, six, two, five, bro. What goes to the referendum? I know it's December twelfth, right, yeah, two days, so it's probably going to be a little turnout. From what I see. A lot of questions I've been asking about myself and my band members. One about, obviously, about taxes, going up with tax information. So I don't know how the, you know, the vote's going to go, hopefully it passes. If it doesn't pass, you guys have a backup plan, and is that backup plan going to capital funds, capital reserves, cutting programs, cutting any other programs, any academic programs? Is there a plan B if it doesn't pass? Or are we going to go back and try to go for another round of votes or another term, see if the referendum passes again? That's what I guess.
Thank you. And feel free to email the referendum email address, it's on the website. And they will be happy to address your questions and any thoughts, opinions, any information that they have. Just, sorry, sorry to say, email. Any other questions or comments or comments?
People mailing in those questions, would the responses be posted on the Q and As?
Would, I'm sorry, can you please?
I'm sorry.
I don't have to do this. Your name, address, and.
Ken App, what's your drive? Questions, or any questions that are sent to that website, would they be posted and then, or, you know, amended? Those questions, you know, Q and As, can you add to the inventory on there?
I'll wait for that, and we'll, we'll close the session.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other one is, I guess it's tax care. What would be the total lifecycle cost? Because I notice you're adding like forty-four, thirty-three, thirty-four classrooms. Would there be additional teachers added? Would there be additional maintenance crew added? What are the additional, I mean, any quality, as I said, would that? So that?
Thank you.
Yep.
Once all the comments are made, we'll address it. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public participation. If you'd like. Oh, sorry, one last one, huh?
Sure, I'll strike up another one, I just want to thank Mr. Foreman. He's agreed to come out with some of the neighbors, all the local information, in which I think this biggest expansion involved, correctly, is some of our backyards, almost literally. So I think we're working on it under twenty-fifth or twenty-first, and everybody out there, take a look at what the options are. So it's not so invasive on, you know, the local neighbors and the characters of the neighborhood especially. Perhaps there's maybe some less invasive ways to do this. Everybody has looked at the building plans as kind of shriek in the neighborhood, while the expansions going up in certain areas. Hopefully we can, you know, try to find the best way possible to do it. One other question I have was, if it doesn't pass the referendum, rumor has been that they can just move state funding until, I mean, that local funding. So that's one of the questions I have. I think some of the neighbors, some of the people locally around the local, they don't know, especially because of bad turnout, they may not know what the true ramifications are. For example, rolling mill may not actually solve the potential problems. And that's why I recommend the student attendant for coming out and giving the dressing, that the afterthought may be a matter in which they're doing it. So that's another question I would like to ask. And can Karen, are there any other, Scott? Clay?
Good evening. Scott Riad, MTA chess district teacher, MTA president. On behalf of myself personally and the entire association, I'd like to wish you and your families a very happy and grateful Thanksgiving.
All right.
Good day to you, Scott.
I, I almost, I don't want to ask, are there any other comments? No, I see none that's closed public participation. Dr. Foreman, is there anything you want to address?
Yes, just quickly, as to something else. So the board would be looking into these, if the referendum did fail, we would have to look at all the options that would be on the table. Some of the programs that we do have on the table that we're looking into, like certain HBA C or something like that, we'd have to address security in HBA C out of our capital reserves budget over the next couple of years. Those would be a priority for us to look at it because they are our top concern. So that's something that we would have to take out of our budget and would be a hundred percent out of the district's budget where we would not be getting state aid to help offset the costs as we would if the referendum passed. So we would look at that up to December thirteenth. I don't want to go down that road too far until, you know, I'm still hopeful and optimistic that we're going to get a positive vote on December twelfth. But we'll see what the taxpayers say, and then we'll, we'll adjust accordingly. As for the lifecycle cost, we would be looking at teachers. So what happens is the elementary schools, we would maybe need an additional teacher or two. But what you might be also seeing is the decrease in the high school through attrition, that some teachers may be retiring. And we may be able to pick up a teacher at the elementary school that somebody did not need, that they didn't need at high school because the numbers were coming down. We wouldn't be able to address that until the actual enrollment all plays out. Right now, we have some of the issues we're trying to address, say at Hilldale, for a perfect example, we're just trying to take some of the classes out of the hallway and put it into the classroom, which would not cost an additional teacher. We just need to get them out of storage rooms and other areas and put them in classrooms, so it would be washed that way. For William Mason, thank you, yes, we'll be meeting hopefully next week. We, we'll hopefully bring New York picked out, and we'll talk about the different options. But you are correct for that, as I just answered, about the local funding, we have to look into to address some of the concerns that we have that would not be offset by state aid. That's the number one reason why we're trying to do a referendum, is to get that state aid that taxpayers are already paying into back into the voter stands and to the district stands to be able to solve some of these challenges that we face.
Thank you. And I would also just add to that, something I mentioned before, is that if the referendum doesn't pass, that that means other projects that we have planned would have to be put on hold. And so there would be improvements and renovations at the high school, which are, that would be delayed by some time more to accommodate HBA C and security issues that we have.
Okay, correct.
Okay, ask for most of the turn?
Not yet, though.
Oh! Wait, we, before this, all the time we. Okay, what is it?
First of all, I have to consider that to the audience as well. Second, December fifth is our last meeting of the year.
No, we have no.
Okay, so may I suggest that on even the fourth and nineteenth, that we gather at a favorite local board meeting, and post the properties.
Don't tell anyone where we're going.
We have it in the line sign.
Yes, thanks, David.
And also, given the fact that we approved this as a new holiday, happy to wow.
Right.
Okay. Okay, motion for close, you have a Okay, second, on paper, I, okay, see you on December fifth.